For a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, under God, in whose name is the justice of our world.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Here.
Councilmember Jakovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda. Make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Jakovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. There were any citizen discussion for items not on the agenda?
I will. Like the Latin, ten fifty-two, as I drive, I spoke to Sue already earlier this week or whatever else. I had proposed, it was three new hydroelectric dams. And then I also want to go behind the existing dams that we have and build backups behind each one of them and or in front of them to perhaps provide more hydroelectric as well. First one, that would be brand new, would be right up above Atwood slash this area going across the river here. And then I would want to do another one across the shorter section here and then down below Atwood. And the one up here would be concrete structure strong enough to grab like eighty thousand pounds semi across. These ones down here would be smaller, do more of steel construction, something that's not going to actually disrupt the flow of the river, but still be able to provide hydroelectric and small car traffic going across. And so we have two new roads going across here and here. And then I want to come down below King Milling, do the hydroelectric back in the wastewater that they already have here. And then come down each side of the river here and do a six foot wide walking path to each of those. And then I'll have a waste out pad where the river is pretty fast flowing there already. You could do something off to each side with water turbines to the point where it wouldn't actually obstruct the flow of the rivers, but we could also put another walking trailer roadway there as well. And then the ones further up, the hydroelectric right up Fallsburg, I think runs. That one we could go behind as well, build a secondary below it just for redundancy and backup. Same with the one on the other side up there as well. I was just, and then I would want walking paths to each of those that we can incorporate to the trail system as well and kind of go that route.
How many power are you looking to produce?
Well, it would make at least double what we're making now or three times what we're making now. Is my thoughts at least, because we have the ones that are operating already. And then we would be going behind them with redundancy and whatever else to pretty much just back them up and provide more water turbines and use of the wastewater that's already present.
Have you talked at all to King Milling or Eagle?
I tried talking to King Milling, but I wasn't able to get anywhere with that. I know that they own and operate the one downtown. But I don't see why we wouldn't be able to go behind them and use wastewater and or pressure them to allow another project there as well.
What about Eagle?
That's Atwood.
No, that's the State Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
I haven't tried talking to them yet. I talked to Lowell Light and Power briefly, but I didn't, I wasn't able to.
Before you do anything, you have to get a clearance from Eagle, because we have no jurisdiction over the waterways. Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy is responsible for that. So are you funding this project or?
No, so this would have to be like a community slash tax prepared funded project, the same. But it would also create revenue for the city as well. So it's not like I'm trying to build this for myself and frickin' fund it myself. It's going to be for the city and I mean, I want my electric paid for at the end of it, but that'd be nice, but.
Yeah, your first starting point before you were doing anything is, because Eagle has standards about bridges, all the stuff you want to do, Eagle has standards and you have to be able to meet those standards before they would even consider this. So you, you know, and I really don't know what the process is, but.
Well, I figure this would be the best place to.
Yeah, I would, I would direct you to Eagle. They would be the ones you would want to start with. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Kathy O'Hara Mulgrew, six oh five, Richwood Court. I want to bring to the council the suggestion that we reengage with leaf removal in our city. The area is fully lined with trees, two rivers, beautiful parks, trailways. We have the best of both worlds being close to the city. We contacted the city manager, the assistant city manager, East Grand Rapids, to ask how they handle their leaf pickup there. I thought we'd be talking about a vacuum truck, but in fact, this man has had many years of experience. He said vacuum trucks are second choice. They operate with, let me turn a page here so I get the details correct. They use trucks that they fill that are led by a backhoe with a tink claw. So they allow people to put all debris, sticks, pumpkins, you name it, in the street. And they run it from April through December with additional trucks from October to December. So they have a total of three trucks. They don't own three backhoes. They own two backhoes. They run two trucks in year round. They add the third one in the fall. They own two backhoes. They rent one for the fall period of time. And what that tink claw is, is basically a big scoop that you put on the front of a backhoe with claws that picks it all up, fills up these trucks. The truck then is delivered to the DPW drop location where it is turned into compost. It's re-sold back to the city and they use it in the spring for upgrading the city. My neighborhood alone, I'm thinking not just for myself, because I'm a veteran, I like the inside, I don't mind dealing with. But my neighborhood alone is a cul-de-sac neighborhood on two sides, all families. I watched them spend hours and hours and hours cleaning leaves and the neighborhood is full of trees and the next day you wouldn't know that they had just spent hours and hours and hours cleaning these very yards. So, you know, you're doing your citizens a favor. It's environmentally friendly, it's economical, you stop with the waste bags that we're using to fill up. I fill up eighty bags a year. That's a lot of money and not just money, but time. And if we want Lowell to be the next place to be, we have to offer some desirables. Aside from marijuana factories, you know, we need to get some families incentivized to come to Lowell with such things as, you know, helping them to maintain their families and not dumping money where it doesn't need to be dumped. And there is, in addition, I asked him what the expense to the citizens ends up being and he said it's just budgeted in. And so I propose that we give that some consideration for Lowell.
Thank you. Anybody else? No old business, new business, I may conflict of interest policy. As part of our application for the United States Department of Agricultural Lowell Development Loan for the Monroe and Washington Project, we must certify to the United States Department of Agriculture the city has a conflict of interest policy. Upon review of the council's review rules of procedure, there is a mere reference toward addressing conflicts of interest, but would not be considered a formalized policy which would be approved by the USDA. However, it is not uncommon for city councils to establish formalized conflict of interest policies. City Attorney Jessica Wood drafted a policy which would address the USDA requirements to disclose a potential conflict or conflict. It would also prohibit members of the governing body to vote on matters where there is a conflict and a process defining how the governing body will manage identified or potential conflicts. The proposed policy would meet the USDA requirements, but more importantly would be a sound policy for the governing body to abide by. With the policy, the city attorney also drafted Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-one to establish the conflict of interest policy. Since this is a policy decision for the city council to consider and approve as an operating procedure for the city council, I will not be providing recommendations. However, we do have to have this policy for the USDA law. I thought we already did in conflict and I talked about it two weeks ago. We've always opted out or abstained from voting on things that directly affected us. Greg used to do it all the time. Yeah. I always just thought there was a policy. So there's a mere reference in the rules of procedure, but that would not be defined as policy. So we've been doing it, but we need a formal policy. Anybody want to make the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one twenty-one?
So moved.
I'll support. Any other questions for Mike? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Jakovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Skate park project, new day. At the November Parks Board meeting, Mr. Bob Rogers attended and discussed the possibility of making some major improvements to our existing skate park. He has put together a group of volunteers that are seeking city permission and support to remove the existing ramps and replace them with larger concrete ramps. He has a plan for design and fundraising with a goal to have the construction be completed in fall twenty twenty-two. With Mr. Rogers' participation in the annual love week, he is well aware of the needs of the skate park. They try to perform maintenance work there each year. Unfortunately, his love week volunteers do not have the time necessary to make the needed improvements to the ramps during their week of maintenance activities. The skate park was constructed in twenty-ten by a volunteer group. They worked hard to put together a plan and to find funding to purchase ramps. At that time, they found good ramps to be costly and funding to be difficult. But in the end, the persevered, the persevered in our skate park was construction. Over ten years later, and the ramps are in need of work, Bob Rogers and his group think now would be a good time to replace them. Rogers is proposing a Lowell skate park replacement project. He's put together a group of volunteers that would also include two representatives from the original skate park group. They are proposing removing the existing ramps and installing new concrete ramps in their place. The concrete ramp should last longer and be quieter than the existing ramps. They have a contact, they have contacted a skate park design company in California, Spoon Ranch. From there, they received two conceptual designs and cost estimates for the new ramps. Depending on the number of ramps and the ramp sizes, the costs vary from a hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Rogers and his groups are interested in performing this replacement project. They are proposing to work with the skate park users and the city to come up with an improvement design. From there, they will work on raising the funds needed to improve, to make the improvements. Once funds are known, they will realize the design and work to get the new ramps constructed. When the project is completed, they will return the skate park over to the city. They are anticipating raising funds during spring, summer of twenty twenty-two with construction performed in fall twenty-two, once funds are available. The Parks Board indicated they know the success of Bob Rogers and his volunteer partners on community projects. They felt this would be an excellent project for them and be supported their, and supported their idea. They did ask for the design group to consider installing some type of shade areas for spectators as the open area does not get hot during the summer. There was comments on the possible addition of a drinking fountain and to provide a design that would lend itself to future expansion of the state skate park if additional volunteers and funds come along in the future looking to make additional improvements. Finally, with graffiti vandalism in our parks, it was asked if some type of artistic area could be included that would allow participants an opportunity to add some color and make some types of artistic conclusion into the skate park. It was anticipated by providing an opportunity to be creative and help reduce the green graffiti that has been showing up around the park. To move forward with this project, Mr. Rogers asked the Park Board for their support and provision, permission to move forward. The board as a whole readily agreed with supporting the project and recommends the city council support and approve the project as outlined in Mr. Rogers' letter. It is the Park Board's recommendation that the city council support Bob Rogers and his Lowell skate park replacement project as outlined in the letter to the Park Board on November ninth, twenty twenty-one, including approval to move forward on implementing this project and having the city treasurers of South Office assist with the acceptance and holding of the donations for this project. So all Bob and his group need from us is access to Sue and Laurie? Well, yeah, I think what they're really asking for is that the city, one supports it and two, we have designated, designated contributions accounts that we can use for these projects. So basically the support to create that account so they can collect the donations. Anybody have a problem with that? I think it's a great idea.
It was, I've been slammed on parts and wrecked. It was, it was a little overwhelming first to like look at the skate park and it's like concrete and there's big ramps and I'm like, okay, this is a really big project. It was bigger than I was anticipating to see. But he talked it through and you know what? If they come up with the funds, I think it would be a huge benefit to the city.
Bob's done a lot of projects like this.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's ready. He's excited.
His motto is no taxpayer.
Yep. He'll give us something to talk about. All right, that's, you want a motion for it or you just want to consensus on that? Probably should have a motion. All right.
Make a motion to give Bob Rogers and his crew the go ahead.
Support that. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Jakovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Board Commission reports, Leo.
Um, I was at Chamber of Commerce. They are doing a treasure, treasures per troops donation. They've got some donations already there. They've got a big bucket that's already overflowing. You can drop off there and then I believe also the Lowell High School is also a donation center. If you do not want to go out to the store and buy supplies and do a drop off, you can make a check payable to Blue Star Mother, who is the host of treasures for troops, twenty dollars purchases a box of supplies. Is that all that is?
All right.
Uh, Planning Commission, we had the owners of the old Adma Warehouse come to get re-certified. It had lapsed due to no work being done there. Question arose whether we were going to make them hook up to city sewer or they were going to use a septic system. And it was recommended that they do hook into the city sewer system because currently they're only going to use fourteen thousand square feet of the, of the building. And eventually they want to use it all, so we just felt it was better to have it hooked into the city so we can deal with the wastewater instead of the neighbors.
Chip.
I had the Lowell Light and Power meeting. We had special guests, Pat Lowland and Steve Doctor Fluke of MMPA. One of the things that they discussed was where our future power is coming from. Currently, a lot of our energy comes from coal plants. And as they start winding down and closing down over the next five, ten years, we need to come up with alternative energies and there's a pretty big gap. I mean, we've got natural gas and we all know the example of natural gas prices going crazy. We've got wind, solar and hydro. So we've got, what's that, about thirty-five percent where we need to fill that gap in over the next five or six years, Charlie?
Currently, we get, currently we get about half of our energy from coal, but we're actively replacing it through solar agreements and, but yeah, it's about thirty percent that we need to replace. It will, will maintain about twenty percent that we'll get from just the open market.
So it was, it was good to hear from Pat and Steve on how that organization helps not just hold up other smaller power companies, stay competitive. So that was very, very interesting and Charlie and his team continue to do a great job there. There's a lot of good conversations outside that, so that's it for me.
What?
Laura did not meet. I got to give away some money to the Look Foundation. It's always fun to give away money that's not mine. We gave ten thousand dollars to the YMCA, which I believe is going to be called the Lighthouse YMCA because Lighthouse stacked up with a quarter of a million dollars. So our ten thousand, that's what they asked for, so we gave it to them. I don't know if everybody's been following it, but Denny's, the place across from Balls, Fromm has taken that over. I, I'd like to thank Jody Sees for putting up weekly updates. And I, I don't have the names of all the volunteers, but there's been a lot of people down there making big improvements. They came to the Look Foundation for nine thousand bucks to upgrade the laundry room. And it's been looking, I've been following it because it's pretty interesting. Anyway, we gave them that and they have ten units there. Six of them are single occupancy and they are keeping the rents very reasonable. It's six fifty to seven hundred bucks, including utilities. And it's working out really well. The people at Balls across the street are happy with the improvements made and the direction there. And I got wind of a study that indicates that Lowell could probably support about eighty more. What's the right term? Rental units in that kind of a price range. And I'm hoping that, that Fromm might be able to get something else going somewhere else. They're working on it. That's what I have.
All right. Well, fire charge was canceled, so I don't have anything. Budget reports, Mike? Yeah, um, not much has really changed in the last month with the budget in the current fiscal year. The only real issue that's really been an item that we've been looking at is the IT issues. I think two weeks ago I told you that we thought we had a solution that would save us some money. We've gotten an updated estimate of that, but I'm not so sure. Charlie and I are going to be meeting tomorrow on that to discuss. The audit is close to being complete. Couple of things to note, I think it's good news. If you recall, last year, we had, we had added, we had about, we had a million dollar fund balance at the beginning of last fiscal year. This is to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. And we had, at the end of that fiscal year, we had an additional two hundred thousand dollars in fund balance that was, that was added. And at the time, the council, with my recommendation, took, took the position that since we're at thirty-three percent of our general fund revenue for fund balance, we're more than double what the, what the minimum recommended amount for fund balances, maybe it's better to start, if we have these fund balances coming in, start putting it towards other items, mainly the unfunded pension liability. So last year, we took a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of that fund balance. We put, we made a payment on our MERS unfunded liability. And then we took your remaining seventy-three thousand-ish, put it towards the fire truck purchase that we'll have to make next year. Well, we, once you start analyzing, once you go through all the end of the year calculations, you realize that that two hundred thousand dollars didn't actually come from the fund balance. It actually came, came through the revenues that we received last year, mainly because if you recall, we significantly lowballed our state revenue sharing and our pilot from Light and Power. And as a result, we actually took in about a hundred and forty thousand dollars more than what we had originally estimated at the beginning in the twenty twenty, back in April twenty twenty, when we approved, or May, when we approved, twenty twenty, when we approved the budget. So we had that additional hundred and forty thousand dollars. We took an additional twelve thousand dollars in personal property tax that we originally projected. Also, when you take into account the twenty-eight thousand dollars we received from the marijuana funds, before we actually put that into the local street fund, we have to show it in the general fund. So it all comes as an expense. But we also received about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in CARES Act funds. So all of those funds added about four hundred thousand dollars more in revenue than what we, than we went in anticipated. So when you look at what the, what the undesigned fund reserve would be at the end of this year, this is, this is pre-audit, the audit hasn't finalized this, but we're, we're thinking that we're going to have about one point four million dollars in unfunded, funded, undesigned fund balance. So that's four hundred thousand dollars more than what we had at the end of the audit last year. So what my thoughts are, and I'm still looking at it, is I think what probably would be prudent to take those funds, take a portion of it, and I don't exactly know how much, I haven't figured it out yet, but portion of it going, and I'll probably have that for you with the audit, once the audit's done. A portion of it going towards the unfunded pension liability, make an extra payment on that. Take a portion of it, put it to local streets and then take a portion of it and put it towards the HVAC upgrades we'll need to make next year for this building. So we're that far ahead when those things come. And the, and so, you know, I'll be coming back to you probably in the summer with that. But at least when you come back to the audit, with the audit numbers, we're in much better shape than we felt than obviously what we had anticipated in the beginning of twenty twenty when we approved the budget. So that's, that's all I have on the budget report. Question. Monthly report question. City manager. Okay. Kind of continuing on with that. Last week, we received notice from MDOT that our Act fifty-one, our Act fifty-one payments, we're going to be seeing an increase beginning December third, December first for the, for the December payment. So to kind of explain it, how it's done off, it's a formula based calculation, but it's, it takes into account your population, the number of, the amount of local, the amount of major streets that you have. And there's like, there's a, there's a, there's a funding ratio number that you, that you use to calculate the number. But the main thing, the main thing is, is that we're seeing about, we're seeing an increase in our population from our twenty-ten census number of three thousand, seven hundred eighty-three people. That was, that's the number that we use. We operate off the twenty-ten, when we, when we go for the state funding for Act fifty-one, we operate off the, the previous census number. So the twenty-ten number was three thousand, seven hundred eighty-three people. Population increased for twenty twenty to four thousand, one hundred and forty-two people. So when you calculate, when you calculate, let's just start for next fiscal year that'll begin in July, you're going to, that equates to about a thirty thousand dollar increase in what we'll receive in Act fifty-one. It might, you know, over time, that, you know, over five years, that's probably the equivalent to be able to pay the street. But it is, it is, it is a slight increase. And we, you know, for this fiscal year, probably you take out the first two months, the first six months of payments, it's probably going to be about maybe a fifteen thousand dollar increase this year. But next year it would be a thirty thousand dollar increase to the, to the Act fifty-one funds. So it, it's a slight increase, but it's better than nothing. So wanted to let you know about that. MERS, Monday, Charlie and I attended a meeting with the CEO for MERS. And the good news is our investments are doing very well. We're seeing, we're at the point now where they don't have to actually calculate the loss from the two thousand eight stock crash in our, in our investment calculation anymore. So that's the good news. The bad news, which I'm not really surprised about, is that they're going to be lowering the rate of return, which kind of knew was coming anyway, from, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't committed to a percentage number as to what they're going to reduce it to, but it'll probably go down from, my, my guess is it'll probably go from seven point three five percent to seven percent. So that would increase our unfunded liability and it would also increase our payments. But the good, the good news is, is if we continue to make these extra payments, these are going straight on basically the principal, so. So maybe if we continue, if we continue to make these extra payments every year, then over time, the payment, the payouts going forward may not be as, as severe. I have, if you recall, I, I informed you that I was looking at, we were having an actuarial study to look at extending the five years, extending five years for when we have to be 100% funded. MERS did not have all the paperwork to us. I thought they had done it, but come to find out last week that, or two weeks ago, that they didn't. So I've, I've been able to sign off on the paperwork. So we should have that report hopefully in the next eight weeks. Once I get that report, I'm bringing it to you to present to you so you, so you have a better understanding of it. Our bond sale, our final bond sale will be tomorrow morning. So one after tomorrow, the bond stuff for the refinancing of City Hall will be complete. The, we will be meeting, there will be a small urban meeting for the small urban project for taking the money from Monroe Street, 2G Drive. We'll be meeting on Thursday on that with representative from MDOT, the Rapid and the West Michigan Regional Planning Council. It will also be proposed, we'll also be proposing to have added for our 2024 allotment, a mill, a millon overlay for Foreman from Beach to G Drive. It should be able, in 2024, we'll, we'll receive $385,000 for that, for that year. We would have to add a 20% match. We had, we haven't finalized the numbers, we'll have that before Thursday, the estimate. But if we're, if we're estimating Foreman to be 450,000, or I'm sorry, G Drive would be $450,000 to do a millon overlay. We do think that the portion from Beach to G Drive on Foreman will be less than that, but I'll have, I'll have better answers later in the week. So, and one last thing, Lou Venter will be here at the Fire Hall on December 13th at 5:30. And that's all I have.
Good. Any questions? Sue for appointments, I did talk to Julie. She will continue on historic history. That's all I have for that. Council comments, Cliff.
Would it be possible to get before the end of the year, some type of idea of where the showboat is at now that the, seems like there's a committee in place? I would just like a, you know, how many times has it been rented? We were assured on multiple occasions it was gonna be a moneymaker. And I'd just like to know how many reservations have been made and how to do this year, some kind of overview? Would that be possible?
Pretty pleased?
Please.
Right now, yeah, I, I can ask Elizabeth to put all that information together for you. We, we got a lot of work ahead of us. We've had our second meeting as, as regarding that small board. We're still waiting for some, something to be finalized on it and how we gain ownership and all that good stuff yet. And Mike's working with us, he's a ten, those have been very graceful, helping us, guiding us to that market. But eventually, in the very near future, that, that board has to have the board on its own and make some hard recommendations. I did, I did ask the board to have just, just a, a small meeting with just the board so, so I can express my concerns. I am the president of that board. So I, I have some questions I'm asking them, tough questions. So look forward to that, but I, I will get you something, Cliff.
Something would be great.
Can we have somebody in person show up to present it?
What's that?
The, what, Cliff, you know?
Well, it'll probably have to be me.
What about a committee of all?
Something to think about, yep.
There's anything we can do to help that board along and they can answer our questions?
Well, right now, right now, the big thing is waiting for us to, to get out the paperwork to 501(c)(3) and Mike's forward that on to some, a couple of people on the board to see if they can help get that.
We're just waiting on the state, right?
We're also waiting on our attorney because the attorney is working on a lot of things for the city that's top priority for this. So that has put, put that back a little bit. And that is the right decision to put that off based on everything else that, that firm's working for the city. And we need to get that taken care of too. So, you know, it'll be, I'll feel bad, I'll tell you that right off the bat. And I, it should not come as a surprise to you guys every week, and I'll feel bad.
Jim.
Um, the, with that, I, I know we got the LCTV board coming up sometime early December. Talk about that, so other than that.
Do you have any idea how many people have applied?
Nobody's applied yet. They can't apply until after we had our meeting and it gets posted and they all get sent to Susie at City Hall. And then they start putting, I think the deadline will be sometime in February. We usually look at the first week in February, so Friday, February. So the board will be meeting, I think, December 2nd, 3rd, somewhere right around there.
The 2nd.
The 2nd, yeah, so get some more information in seconds.
Charlie, are we gonna do the Christmas decoration or light deck thing this year?
That was an initiative that was led by Rotary, and we have not been contacted by Rotary. So at this point, I don't think so. But it's something we'll be proactive in reaching out to them by next year because we're hearing a lot of positive comments on them. So may, may take a year off, but, but we'll look at, reach them back out to them next year.
Just say it's COVID related and go with that. Shipping, shipping problems.
Shipping fare.
I'm all lit, so I can just leave.
He wouldn't say on the record he was lit after me. Let me clarify.
Lift up.
I would like to share about Lowell's Open Table. It's a local nonprofit here. And what they do is they provide weekly meals that are family size. I believe their serving's are four to six people. And they do it every Thursday. I believe that hours of pickup, I could be wrong, but I believe it's 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. for pickup. And they are looking for volunteers for the Thursday of Thanksgiving to prep, to serve, and to be present and to show up for community members who need a meal. As far as I know, they, it's every Thursday, not just Thanksgiving. And donations are welcome, but if you need a meal, it is there for you. I just wanted to share that information.
Good. Hey, congratulations, Jim, Marty and Leah and the Historic Museum, which I think is awesome. I've been, I've gotta worry about it for another decade. And congratulations to you on getting your Christmas lights up while you were out of town this weekend.
Yeah, it was great.
I think so. Jim?
They make a motion to adjourn at 7:30.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let adjourn. It looks very nice.
It looks, I'm not gonna say it doesn't look nice.